Okay. So, we are going to have a work session to look at all of that. Great. So, take your way. Okay. Thank you, Chair Moore. Hello, everyone. Yes, I think we're starting again from where we left off, maybe on September 25th. On September 25th, I came in to talk about the state of CTE programming in the district, and it snowballed into lots of very exciting things happening around the district. And some of them, I might not be the expert, so we have lots of experts in the room. You can see many of our multiple pathway principals. We have our Office of School Modernization. I think even Basetti, was Basetti able to make it? No. Okay, so Office of School Modernization, we have Principal Wilson here, and so lots of people here to contribute, to answer the questions that you have tonight. So, again, we are picking up, we ended on the 25th with lots of questions around multiple pathways programming, the Benson configuration, the CTE programming for the district, the modernization timeline, and then a specific ask of staff recommendations. So, after I left the 25th meeting, I wanted to find out, so some of the questions were around why the staff had done some of the work it had done leading up to this point. And so, I went back to find out some of the context around some decisions. And I found in 2012, the High School System Design Report that discussed creating a community of comprehensive high schools, allowing for focus option schools, as well as alternative education option programs, to an influx of career-related learning opportunities for students. It even went as far to say seven community comprehensive schools. And again, this is based on the 2012 High School redesign report. And also focus option schools, including Benson Polytechnic and Jefferson Middle College and some charter schools. So, also in the 2012 document, I did find some recommendations from the former superintendent proposing that Benson Polytechnic would offer a four-year CTE programming options, that it would be a more in-depth, career-focused program, that Benson would continue to have athletic programs, extracurricular activities for students, as well as specific CTE-related programming. And then, oh, I'm so sorry. I was reading a slide ahead. I apologize. So, these were the recommendations from the former superintendent, 2012. And then, in 2015, there was a Board Resolution 5160 that stated that the Modernization Master Plan would create a Benson campus that would hold student capacities and a common area in classrooms for 1,700 students. That directed the staff to complete an analysis of the location of Alliance. And then, that analysis would be brought forth to the Board, and then staff would commence with EdSpecs. And so, this, the basis between 2012 and 2015 Board Resolution is the basis for many of the decisions that have been kind of rolling since then in the master planning phase. So, I did kind of say, well, I wonder what happened right to number two? Did we do an analysis? And there was internal analysis, so I don't think that it came to the Board. In fact, I know it didn't, at least that's my understanding, is that it didn't. But in the spring of 2016, Karina Wolf and Paul Cathcart did a series of focus groups with different multiple pathways programs in the communities. And they collected a lot of data around the needs that the community would ask for. And they came up with some different ideas in the spring of 2016, and they wrote it up into a report that went to senior staff on September 13th, 2016. I don't, it didn't make it any further since senior staff. But looking at that report now, many of the proposals are kind of irrelevant to today because they suggested things like maybe moving all of the multiple pathways programs into Tubman, right, which obviously, so some of the recommendations that they had made in 2016 aren't applicable today. But they did do a lot of work. Additionally, there was an Ed Options Review Report that was done, looking at some different facilities, needs of programming. And then, there was also a School Improvement Bond Committee. They came together, and it was during, in 2017 disbanded, so the information that they gathered also kind of, so, so looking back, I think, I wouldn't say number two here or three was complete, but there was internal action and I don't know if transition of staff or leadership where that fell off. So, that's where, as we're looking to answer the question of why have things happened as they have since then, because we have been, as a staff, working from the assumptions from 2012 and the High School redesign plan of 2012, and then the Board Resolution of 2015 is what we have been working from. So, I can pause there.
Can I make a request?
Please.
Can we get a copy of the Ed Options Review Report? I believe you have. We have a PowerPoint, and we have a one-page.
This should have been in your clipped piece.
That PowerPoint thing.
It's right here.
Ed Options Review.
You're asking, is there?
Is there a report?
I think that's going on.
It's not on the bottom, I think, yeah. I think that's it, about halfway in.
The question is, besides a PowerPoint.
Is there an actual report?
I will find that out.
It would not surprise me if there weren't.
Oh, I see.
Just saying. But they keep talking, they keep referencing a report.
I think, I think there is one, actually.
I never saw anything more than a page or two of your statements.
No.
That was the only thing that was.
And that was great. That's what I.
All the board received was the report to the Board.
So, staff has just let me know there is one. They'll send it to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I just have a bigger overarching question about how we're going to process all of this. So, we have this work session. Do we have a series of work sessions, or what?
So, we have a timeline in here embedded to help answer some of that for the group.
And I really kind of just jumped to it. So, tonight, we'll be talking about some of the programming options, configuration options, multiple pathways. Next week, there's another working session where the Office of School Modernization and Basetti Architects are going to be presenting. And then, at the Board Meeting on December 11th is, my understanding is also part of the agenda for decision-making, so really this is.
So, it's tonight and?
That's it.
So, and what are the decisions we're being asked to make by December?
So, we're getting to that. So, I think essentially, there's.
So, just real quickly, I think we need to come back to your question. I think it's a really good one, because sometimes as a board member, I feel like I'm being carried along, and I'm not very sure, what river are we on?
For example.
And that's, that's not criticism, that's just.
Right. So, for example, most of us weren't on the Board, nor were staff.
Right.
Most of the staff were part of that earlier decision-making. So, I think there's, you know, some direction, some assumptions about directions set that we may need a full discussion on. So, it's a huge, a huge project, and I wouldn't want to.
I think it would be helpful to go through the whole thing because she kind of lays out some options. She also clarifies the decisions to make. And we'll continue to discuss why we've been operating under an assumption of timeline. Of course, the Board can change that, and that can be a part of this conversation. But I think her, the information in this will give you more to talk about that if we just keep moving forward through it. Not that we don't want you to ask questions.
We will help frame some of those questions.
Right. So, I guess, just at the start of the meeting, I don't want to get to December 11th, it's like we had a work session, and so now we expect you to vote, because there's a whole lot of information here and assumptions made. And I don't know that everybody's in agreement on the assumptions or any information we have, so I just want to, I want to flag it at the very beginning.
Absolutely. And that's what we understood in putting this together and why she started with sort of the historical thing about, here's what we know as new people coming on board.
And I greatly appreciate.
There's plenty of room for that conversation.
And I would just add to that. I agree with Julia in that my hope for not just tonight, but this whole process, is that the educators give us your recommendations for, based on best practices and based on the best fit for our district, about what this should look like for us to consider without feeling constrained by any assumptions or prior direction, you know? If we're going to build, if we're going to build this incredibly expensive, brand-new, state-of-the-art high school, we want it to be the absolute best in the nation, and everything's up for discussion. Because we have a new team.
So, I think we put this together recognizing that most of the board members who are in the Board now, who are the leadership of the district, did not make those decisions, and that we knew we were going to look to you tonight to give us guidance on those next steps. We just wanted you to know how the work has gone that needed to continue to go in the absence of the Board having this conversation and having made any decisions for now.
So, before you launch, so we have two, we have tonight, we have next week.
Yes.
Right? If, if it looks like we're going to need more sessions, then we can add more sessions.
Absolutely.
But it's going to have to be an add-on, because the work sessions are already pretty full that we, so we'll be adding dates, so just so you know. Okay.
So, another question that was asked on September 25th was which multiple pathways programs were being housed or were working out of the Benson site? So, those programs that are currently located on the Benson site include the Reconnection Center School, which is a half-day transition school. Enrollment fluctuates between 25 and 45 students. There's Teen Parent Services Program. Again, the enrollment fluctuates generally between 7 and 15 students. There's the Alliance Alternative High School on the Benson campus that also has rolling enrollment. Generally, it serves between 100 and 150 students at a time. There's also the Clinton Dart School that runs. It is also a fluctuating enrollment, generally somewhere between 20 and 45 students. Reconnection Services, the office where we greet families coming back into the district is also located on-site, so those aren't necessarily classrooms, those are office spaces being used. And then, the Portland Evening and Summer Scholars Program, which is our district's credit recovery options, are, they run on the Benson site, but on alternate hours, so not when Benson students, so here's kind of a summary of that. So, the top chart shows the number of students who are on the Benson site at the same time as the Benson Polytechnic High School is running. And then, at the bottom is both the office hours for reconnection services, as well as the evening and center scholars, because they're not at the same time as.
Just to be clear, they're just using the facility, they're not using any of the equipment? They just have rooms.
Correct.
You forgot the PISA program.
Oh, it's not part of multiple pathways. Yes, you're correct. PISA program is a program for high school students who are newcomers in their language, and they're adolescent-aged, and that program usually runs between 15 and 25 students. It's housed off of the auditorium, takes a couple of rooms, I think three classrooms there. And that's, the students who enroll in that program are in the program up to 18 months before they rotate out into their area high schools.
Are there other locations for the PISA program?
It's the only current program in our district. Right.
So.
Thank you.
Working, again, from the assumption of the resolution that was made in 2015, if we, if we collectively are deciding to go in that same direction as a staff, we would recommend co-locating the multiple pathways programs on the Benson site. So, we would be building the campus site to hold 1,700 students. Approximately 250 would be for multiple pathways programming, and approximately the facility's capacity for 1,450. Again, we're not necessarily suggesting that the cap be raised immediately to 1,450. We're saying, facilities-wise, building to.
Construct.
To construct to 1,450. If, again, there's a few assumptions, and I'll be getting to some additional information. If this is the direction that we collectively decide to go in, then we'd also recommend including some stakeholders from the multiple pathways community to, as part of the DAG process, to have input into what that shared co-located space might look like on their campus. And additionally, something that came up on September 25th is that currently our Alliance students who are located on the Benson campus don't have access to CTE programming, so we can immediately start looking at opportunities for Alliance students to participate in CTE programming. Absolutely. And we will start that. So, the next question that came up on the 25th, and the next option to look like, is what we're calling configuration. And so, configuration is not necessarily of facilities or the programming, but how the Benson program might run within the building site. And so, currently, we have what we're calling a focus option. And so, looking at what's, exactly essentially what is happening right now at Benson with the CTE programming students' application coming from 9th through 12th grade, having access to additional CTE programming. But the building implications of this kind of configuration include some comprehensive aspects, as well as CTE spaces. And that is what, again, based on, between the 2012 report and the 2015 resolution, this is the assumption that our Office of School Modernization and the process has been working towards this first option. We talked about some additional models and what that might look like on September 25th. So, one of those options could look like essentially what we've called a hybrid model. So, within that hybrid model, there could still be application students who come to Benson from 9th to 12th grade with options for students. I know Director Bailey had a question, what if students in the 11th or 12th grade decided they were interested in a program, a CTE program that Benson had? This would allow students to come, additional students, so there would still be like the home-school core Benson students. And then, that would allow, the hybrid would be students taking core classes at their home high school, and then coming and having access to upper-level CTE courses at Benson if Benson was offering programming that wasn't available at their home high school. And so, that's, and so that, again, if we get into the weeds, that might look like an A/B schedule for them. We can talk about scheduling options.
Do you have a sense of how many students that might be, or what the bounds might be in a model like that, or not quite there yet?
It's kind of hard to project with our current design for what we have for FTE classes offered. I think Benson has three of their programs that are theirs, and they're not in other places. But this program could also address programs that are starting in some sites, and they have advanced coursework at Benson. So, it's just hard to project what that would be, but there's different models that that could take on.
So, in 2015, actually, there was some work in design done, and that looked like pure Benson students having 900 spaces, and then 300, around 300 or 400 could be the students coming in for specific programming. But again, I think that there's, that was internal work done in 2015, so that's nowhere, but options to talk about what that might look like in a hybrid model. And then, another configuration.
I was just saying, one other thing about the hybrid model is that that would really be some, that would really be part of a larger CTE program design, for that to really, really be at its best. I mean, as we, Aurora actually goes forward with some of the design things that she has in mind for the district as a whole, then this, that's where this would really play and be most effectively designed to be as part of that program.
Absolutely. As we talk about, because right now, there's options for, CTE options for students at their home school. So, again, looking at programming options for Benson, if there's, right now, they have three unique programs, so with three unique programs, maybe that doesn't look like a lot of students if they had additional unique programs only to Benson, then maybe that would attract other students. And then, and again, with a hybrid model, building implications would include both comprehensive aspects, so those core classrooms to core academic classrooms, as well as other spaces, athletic facilities and whatnot, to meet the needs of the Benson homes, essentially students 9th through 12th, and then plus CTE spaces. So, the next configuration model, essentially a CTE hub, the building implications might look like only CTE spaces, as opposed to some of those comprehensive needs. And again, that might look like the site only holding CTE and home campuses, housing, core academics, athletics, and then they come to Benson as, just for CTE programming. So, essentially, at this point, and I know Director Bailey had a question around doing an analysis around option B, and that hasn't been done right now, again, because the work of the Office of School Modernization and most of the team, again, has been running on the assumption that we would go with option A, the current model. So, looking at what would it look like to change configurations? If we decided to go with option A or B, there is still some flexibility in the space of the mass, of the current master plan as it's designed, because it's currently designed with comprehensive needs in there. So, the opportunity to stay on the current timeline with choosing either A or B is feasible. If we looked at B, again, we would have to look at what might busing look like, what might staffing look like, what would programming look like. But option C would essentially change what the design committee has come up with so far, and so that would have implications on the current timeline. So, Dan in the Office of School Modernization said if there's significant changes to the current master design, he would project that it would push everything out one year, which is, was their projection, if we went with a configuration C. And so, one of the reasons that there's some flexibility in the conversations around if we go with option A or B, is because in the current configuration for the master plan, they've designed it with flexible spaces. So, they're creating it with CTE suites, is what the word that we've been using. So, in a CTE suite, it's the idea that we're integrating CTE programs and core programs. And so, this is an example of the suite that the architects are creating. So, a suite A-type, the turquoise color would be the CTE space, the darker blue would be a classroom space, and the gray would be like a teacher office space or support space. And so, there, they have been, right, leading up to this point, again, making assumptions from before, creating a building based on space needs. So, an example of a CTE programming that might fit in a suite type C, for example, could be health occupations or electrical. And that's based on the space needs of the CTE programs. And a suite type D, that's here, a larger one, could fit programming, automotive, construction, manufacturing. So, these are the programs, the CTE programs that Benson currently has. The other great thing about creating the flexible space is if we wanted to add more unique programs into the Benson space, so we would look at the space needs of that new program, and then we could align it to one of the suite options. So, as an example, in the master plan, you can see, and this isn't the full thing, just because that's what you're going to get much more into the weeds of next week. But I just wanted you to be able to visualize why we're about to start talking about some flexible options. And that's because how they've designed it is with suite-type spaces. So, for example, in the upper right is a suite type C. So, what that looks like is, here, it's 7,200 square feet of space. And so, whether that becomes the manufacturing suite or other options for space.
So, like on that plan right there, where would the multiple pathways be?
So, the nice part about that is, in the suite design, it could be, depending upon how much space we wanted to use, or how many rooms we wanted to use, the suite allows them to continue to go forward with their design, and then they could actually design the classroom needs inside that space. So, if it was determined that they needed a space, a suite size of a D for that program or those programs, then they could determine, instead of actually having a large workspace for what might be used for auto, they could actually use that for additional classrooms because the square footage would still permit it. So.
So, but like under this theory, they're not having, they don't get access to any of the CTE programs? So, it's just as if they're co-located?
They're not.
I'm just trying to understand.
No, those are two different.
Yeah. Those are two different questions. We are working towards getting them access to programs.
Yeah.
Okay? So, that's, we're working on that part. And the design is such that it adds a lot of flexibility to actually making everything thin. Okay? Because, because all of these are actually based off the same denominator in size, then gives them flexibility in the design as to which suite goes where. So, in some cases, when you're looking at a larger suite like D, you might be able to get two suite Bs out of that, if that's what the need was, when the program designs were, when the programs that we wanted to have there were actually determined.
So, you've made it kind of modular on both sides, on the facility side and also on the programmatic side. So, you know with each programmatic need, how much square footage you need and what type of flexible space, and then you can plug and play.
Exactly.
Okay. Sorry, but I'm just trying to understand this concept.
Sure.
So, so you have an Alliance classroom, a core classroom, and then they also, students also have access to CTE. Is it a space, is it, say it's automotive? Are they with their own CTE instructors, or is the program integrated?
They would be in the CTE programs. Okay?
So, they get their, potentially their academics separately?
Probably, yeah. They run on such a different schedule, Alliance does.
So, that's one of. So that's one of the, one of the, um, goals of the new, uh, design is that it, it's different than what we traditionally think of as a teacher classroom, like, I own this classroom and all my things are here and I, and the kids come to me. It's flexible, and so if you look at this, um, utilization rate, so here on the left is the utilization rate of the current classrooms, meaning, um, if I have three conference periods, my classroom's not being used during those three. What this is suggesting is that teachers would have office spaces and then the classrooms, many different teachers would be able to use that classroom, say, so when it's empty during conference periods, other teachers can, uh, much more of the shared space. So what, so, um, the, the proposed increases utilization rate by giving teachers offices instead of assigning a teacher a classroom. Does that make sense?
So you'd have, for example, an alliance teacher teaching the automotive?
This doesn't really have.
Right, we haven't talked about the program.
Well, I'm just trying to understand sort of how, how the schematic, how if you're wanting, if the recommendation is to have co-location, how we could.
So maybe third period, A teacher from, that serves alliance students teaches their class in the same lab space. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm just trying to understand.
Okay, yes, yes. Oh, okay. Okay. So some of the things, um, that, uh, for us to consider is, is in terms of configuration is that, um, either configuration A or B, if we chose that type of configuration for Benson moving forward, um, would allow, again, if this is our desire, to keep with this current timeline and the current master plan. If we decided to change to C, there would be, um, a definite delay because they'd have to redesign the ma, the current master plan. So with the, um, multiple pathways, uh, programming, if we chose configuration A or B, we could still co-locate at this point in the project without any delays, if that was the desire. Um, and so I think what, um, Jo was saying is that if we decided to co-locate and then we could look at how much square footage the multiple pathways programs would need, and then we could align that with maybe suite space. So instead of it being built as it looks here, it would then be built to meet the needs of the multiple pathways program that was going in there, but it still wouldn't affect the overall master plan because that area was still set aside. So.
Before you move on, so hypothetically.
Okay.
If, um, if the decision were made to co-locate, um, and then at some point down the road, five, ten, however many years, um, if you're building Benson to accommodate co-location, is that going to cement co-location in place? I mean, could you then undo it at some point if you want it to go back to the A?
So we can just, like, if this, the slide that showed those suites, um, this right here, these are the current programs that they have.
Right.
So it kind of shows how those suites could be utilized for the space that they're offered. So, um, if, if we had additional suites of, uh, just say a D or a C that they're in, then it also would speak to CTE being able to fill that space should they be moved elsewhere. Okay?
Okay, so you, so you could just re-convert it back to a type A.
Or the same.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yes.
We're, next week, you're going to know a lot already. Um, one of the reasons this, like, gray bar is through the middle is that's where, uh, the plan is for all of the major support work. So the electrical, the air ventilation and all of that. So reconfiguring the other spaces around that is an option as long as that's, that's in, because that center structure will allow for some flexibility in needs.
So, uh, while we're still on design, I have a question that pertains to design. So I know, and I don't want to jump again to your recommendations, but they are right here. Um, if, I, I don't understand why if we, um, looked at the hybrid model, why that would have any bearing on design because there are students, just like the all-day students attending Benson, and it would have still all the elements of a comprehensive high school, they're just coming from somewhere. So that would not, as far as I can tell, have any impact on scheduling.
That's why A and E would not impact the schedule.
Okay.
Uh, B, I think maybe the confusion is B might have additional cost implications in busing or traffic.
But not designed in that.
Not designed.
Exactly, yes.
Let's go.
So I'm confused about the busing thing because if we have, say, a hybrid model and the full-time Benson kids are taking TriNet, why aren't the Wilson kids taking TriNets? I don't understand what I mean.
It's, it's, it's just a question mark is all it is. It's just an unknown. One of the other things they'll tell you more about is parking.
Yeah. I said there is none and there won't be any.
The other thing goes, in a hybrid model, so if you had either, um, fourteen hundred students there full-time or eleven hundred, three hundred, those three hundred wouldn't be taking English there.
Correct.
Not, not, not in the, not in the comprehensive side.
So wouldn't you have less of a need for the classroom space in terms of designing?
Yes.
If you could add another CTE pathway, because kids are only coming there in the afternoon or on weekends.
What happens with Alliance, I think, this, is it a, is it a state?
There's not any design to move Alliance to B to Benson this plan.
Okay, is there an educational reason not to do that?
My assumption was always that if we're considering a stay, then it's an integrated high school because right now it's just a victim of lack of space. It's not a programmatic reason that has split that school into.
It is not programmatic, but when we looked at previous decisions and where the numbers fell, that's how we created these options.
Yeah.
Remember I said, it's up to this board to make the changes that you want. We can come back and tell you how that could happen.
Yeah, that decision can be made by this board. We're, we're operating off of what the resolution directed us to follow.
I mean, that's, that's where some of my questions got crossed, wasn't it?
Okay, um.
I think we all see where.
I have lots of questions about multiple pathways. Is now the time to ask them or should I wait?
Can I get through one more section? And then I think it'll bring some clarity in what decisions, what decisions need to be made around a certain timeline. Okay, so I'm going to jump into this last section. So, um, around CTE programming. So I know there were questions around, uh, the current programming that we offer and opportunities for the future because as we know, uh, CTE is a proven dropout prevention rate in that our, we're graduating kids twenty percentage points higher that participate in CTE. Um, so when we talk about.
How much of that is selection bias?
Oh, all right, comments, that's a good question. That's a good question.
How much of what?
I think, yeah, so much is selection bias, and I think that's a valid point because that's actually one of the high school goals, is to actually focus on creating more options for students who are historically underserved to get into. We actually have some designs to increase that.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not saying that would account for the whole thing and where they could actually.
Right, but no, no, point taken, no, point taken, yeah.
And the other thing that's kind of swirling around here, and we talked about it informally, is can we get a graduation rate that is based on where students start?
Yes.
As opposed to where they end?
By sight?
Yeah. Sure.
Will they start in terms of mobility or?
My, my, my initial high school in ninth, first day of ninth grade is X.
Yeah, not because that would be a better statistic than the other, but because it's good to see both.
It would be competitive.
Okay, so as far as the specific programs that, um, we want to have moving forward, there, the kind of opening day deadline is, if, again, if we're going under the assumption that we're maintaining the current timeline, is March nineteenth. We, we would have to let the architects know by, uh, March nineteenth, sorry, fifteenth, March fifteenth, twenty nineteen, what our opening day programming needs are. So that gives us a few months to, um, complete the process that, uh, Jeanne and I have started in the needs analysis, asset mapping for the district and coming up with a CTE master plan. So, um, so we can come, again, at that time to you, or, or, I mean, before that deadline, but with some, um, more information. So we, I, we, I want you to know we've started the process and we'll be coming to you soon with, um, some more of that plan, um, for programming. So, uh, also, when we look at, again, how the designers have created those flexible spaces, new programming that aligns with the space options that are in the building wouldn't necessarily push back the timeline. Also, in the current plan is fifteen thousand square feet that has been unassigned for any current programming, um, although that is above Ed's specs and you may decide to cut that extra square feet for, as a cost-saving method. But there is, um, in the current master plan, some square footage that would potentially allow for, uh, expansion of CTE programming. And again, you'll find out.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I was going to, yeah, how much?
If you go back to the suites.
Jen, Dan, do you know how many classrooms of?
It's two suites.
Two suites.
Two size C suites.
Two size D, which is the largest size.
C, size C.
Size C, okay, thank you.
So, so I'm confused. Um, is this like, we don't know what's going to happen in those suites, but we've got enough kids for them, or I?
That, that's probably better answered by Jen and company because there is, um, Jen, would you, would you speak to this question, please?
Well, it's part of the response to the steering committee to provide some flexible area, either to grow the existing CTE programs or to provide future growth for additional CTE programs. So that's, that's why that came about, the fifteen thousand additional square feet for future CTE.
Which is about four and a half million dollars.
Um, I don't have a number associated.
But you can ballpark.
I think it's closer to ten, actually, with escalation, because you know where the last project is.
Over five, over five hundred dollars worth.
Yes.
So I just think that's interesting in context of every other school in science has been hammered on square feet.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll share more detail of how that fits in.
But also, if so much of what we're looking at is flexible.
Yeah. If, if, if we have a flexible design, then why do we need more flexibility? And I'm not saying, that, that sounds like a negative question, but, uh, but I mean, it is in your role.
And so, again, those are the decisions that the, um, design team will be bringing for you, um, to make. And then, again, I spoke a little of this, is that we are starting, uh, our CTE master plan, and so we will be coming with some programming needs. Um, and so, or ideas. So I know there was some discussion around, um, decisions and when those have to be made, and so I just wanted to be explicit around a few timelines. So when we speak of the exact programming options that would be at Benson, we have some flexibility through March nineteenth. Um, if, again, uh, in the assumption that we want to stick to the current timeline and the master plan. So until December eleventh, essentially, is when we have the decision to make if we want to stick with the current master plan, um, which would give the op, the opportunity to decide which configuration, A or B, for example, and that wouldn't necessarily have, um, huge implications on the master plan. So again, we could potentially stay on track. And then the other decision that we would need to make, um, to, to stay on track with the, again, the current, would be the co-location decision because, um, uh, by December eleventh, if we decide to co-locate multiple pathways, that would still give us opportunity to include into those suite designs the, the specific programming needs and site and facilities needs that those programs would need. Um, and so essentially, the same way that I'm saying for CTE programming, we wouldn't have to make that decision until March nineteenth, opening day. That timeline would give the opportunity for the designers to talk to the multiple programs, um, community to find out what their specific needs would be, so they would have opening day needs by March nineteenth, if we were, again, sticking with that same master plan and timeline approach. So I think some of the decisions that, as we're talking about the timeline, would, we would want to make by December eleventh would be, um, the, the size of the building, the number of students the site would hold, and whether or not, um, we're co-locating. Um, and then decisions that could be, uh, pushed back till March would be around the specific programming. And then if by December eleventh, the board decided to, um, reconfigure the whole master plan design, there would definitely be cost implications, not that we can't, but cost implications around another, what another year of planning would look like, and then potentially what costs would come from delaying the project. So those are just some things to consider, and that's all I have.
Okay, um, do you, do you have an ETA for the, um, CTE mess, the big plan for the CTE, the five-year plan?
We're, we're in contract negotiation right now, so we're hoping to bring a contract to you, um, for approval at the November twenty seventh, at the November twenty seventh board meeting, um, to start the, that, in the first phase. So it's, um, the, the master planning is done in phases. So the very first phase is, uh, needs analysis, um, which would examine our programs at the different high schools, and then looking at, uh, like, a nine, twenty articulation and what needs we might have, and then also an asset mapping, so looking at, um, partnership opportunities, uh, labor market data, um, and where, and so those are the first, that's the first phase of the master plan. So we would hope to have implementation plan and master plan completed by next summer. But the phase one, which would be asset mapping, needs analysis, we would have done by, um, about March deadline.
So I have a question about the evening scholars and the summer scholars. So, um, summer, Mike and I, you know, go to summer scholars, and so you have a whole bunch of students like there in the summertime in a CTE classroom, but like doing math or, you know, English. I mean, it has nothing to do with what the setting is. So i, if there was a decision to make, co-locate and have evening scholars and summer scholars, is one of the things that's potentially contemplated is actually greater utilization of the CTE space, not just the classrooms? Because right now it's just, I'm trying to say, just the classrooms, but there's no CTE programming happening during the summer or at night, is my understanding?
Correct.
So is that something that's contemplated? I mean, it just seems like a.
So my understanding is that evening and summer scholars is for credit recovery for, towards on-track graduation. So what we're offering now is core academics. So I don't believe that we've looked at expanding those options at all. So I see, uh, Dave back there nodding, just making sure. So it, uh, up until this point, we've only looked at specific core academic requirements for graduation, and that being said, there's opportunities for expansion. Up till now, we have not looked at that.
There seems like we're going to invest a lot in that space and then, well, utilize it as a regular classroom, seems like, uh, not an optimization. classroom, seems like not an optimization of the space.
I'd say it's, it's less credit recovery than what does an extended learning initiative look like district-wide at all grade levels, where we're opening up and maximizing those spaces to create summer, summer academies for younger students to have those, you know, exposure opportunities who may then later decide, how would it be a path look like this? We talked a little bit about, would it look like a summer arts academy, a STEM academy, et cetera?
So my question is kind of related to that, which is that, right now, for the consideration before us, we have all the multiple pathways lumped together at Benson, because they are presently lumped together. But there's nothing in here that talks about why programmatically the other things, other than Alliance, should be at Benson. And they're all relatively small, so they would be relatively easy to find another space for. So, is there any reason why we wouldn't just consider Alliance?
The reason why we didn't go there is because we were operating off of the direction of that resolution from two thousand fifteen, which was explicitly so.
Okay, so that's the kind of thing we want to, like, be able to have open conversations about.
So you need to open that up, right, if you want to talk about that.
Right, but we want to just be able to have open conversations about what really makes the most sense.
We're gonna propose a plan that's in the system with existing board policy.
We're inviting you to do so.
And I also want to add a similar, one of the greatest things about Benson is its central location, both for being a focus school and for many of our multiple pathway programs, the students are traveling from all over the city. So, I do just want to highlight that, that central location is one of really important for our multiple pathways programs.
We have other locations that could be reasonably central, but they're, but they're small. So, they could be available for a smaller program.
So are you asking about, like, Dart and some of those others that are there?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so can we, can we talk about multiple pathways now?
This reconnection step is not, these aren't, these are services and triage, they're not classroom.
Right.
Some, some of the, some of the stuff.
Okay, so, so I want to piggyback on Amy's question, like, is there a pedagogical reason to, to combine, to have all of these, I mean, you've got quite a few different kinds of programs that are sort of lumped together as multiple pathways. Is there a pedagogical reason to keep them together, or is this a, a convenience because of space constraints?
I'd like to direct that to Matt, to Matt.
And I would also add on to your question, particularly at the expense of reuniting Alliance.
Right. So, so the next question is, is there a reason to split Alliance?
Or keep it split, you mean?
Keep it split as opposed to unify.
So I'd like, Matt, if you don't mind, Matt, Matt runs our Reconnection Center, which helps to actually identify where student needs go and such, would you maybe, can you speak to this?
Do you want to come up to the table?
I gotta cheer, right?
I think it's important to distinguish between Reconnection Services and the Reconnection Center, right? So Reconnection Services is a team of case managers who work with approximately one thousand students each year, who've either completely disengaged or are in the process of disengaging from their education. So that team is of, of case managers, also includes school social worker and a data analyst. We're sort of housed in a small office on the Benson campus, and that is with intentionality, because we're centrally located, and so it's easier for us to serve students and families from across the district. The Reconnection Center, however, is co-located with Alliance at Benson, and that is, again, intentional, so that the students who enroll in that temporary transitional program are able to access all of the academic programming offered at Alliance at Benson. So, we're able to blend our FTE. So Reconnection Center brings a point-five math teacher, a point-five English teacher, and a point-five art teacher, and so we're able to increase the capacity of Alliance at Benson to offer sort of a full portfolio of courses for students. And then, Reconnection Center students are able to access the, the full sort of set of courses that a high school student can access. And so, Reconnection Center Temporary Transitional Program, where we refer students for one of three reasons. First reason is because of an enrollment window, so maybe we have a kid who's coming out of Franklin High School, and we determine that the best fit for that student is gateway to college, but they operate on a community-college schedule, and so their kid can't start until January, it's October, we don't want that student out of school, come to the Reconnection Center. You can take all of the classes that a high school student can, and so we can sort of maintain some momentum, so that when that enrollment window opens, you're able to hit the ground running.
That's good.
Second reason is because we're not sure what that best-fit program might be yet. So kid coming out of Franklin again, maybe completely disengaged from school, has been home for a month, we don't want that student to remain out of school while we continue to assess and evaluate and to determine what sort of program might be the best fit for that student. And then the third reason, and this is increasingly becoming the most common reason, is a student may have stuff, social-emotional barriers to being able to immediately take advantage of a re-enrollment option. So we have them come to the Reconnection Center, and we continue to work on that stuff until they get to a point where we're confident that they're gonna be able to take full advantage of going to Alliance at Benson, or returning back to Franklin, or to some of our other partners in alternative education.
So, can you go over one more time? You've got one and a half teaching FTE, and are those, or not, are the Reconnection Center students blended in with Alliance at Benson?
Yes. Yes. So, Reconnection Center students and Alliance at Benson students have almost exactly the same experience in the classroom, same space, same teachers, same curricula, it's just the intention that's different. So for Alliance at Benson student, the intention is that they graduate from Alliance at Benson. For the Reconnection Center, the intention is they transition to another school or program when they're ready.
And they may or may not be getting some extra case work support?
Correct.
As if it's that, that third category mentioned about, the kids trying to, trying to balance the social-emotional before they go to a place.
And it would be hard to provide both continued transition support and that social-emotional support if Reconnection Services was located at a different site than the Reconnection Center. And the Reconnection Center, for the reasons that I articulated earlier, is co-located with Alliance at Benson. So, I, I think.
So I'm hearing more than a central location?
Yeah.
So sort of back to the pedagogical reasons, or at least those three programs to be co-located, I think are fairly powerful.
They're integrated.
They're integrated, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so how about Alliance at Benson, Alliance at Meek? Is there a logic to that?
I'm gonna give up my seat and allow Lauren and Allison to address that.
But, thank you for what you do.
This is Lorna Fast-Battlehor, she's the principal of Alliance.
I think Allison and our vice-principal.
Thank you. There you go.
So, good evening, everybody. So, we, we do have different models at Alliance at Benson and Alliance at Meek. Roughly, what we, what we kind of determine in terms of placement is students who are a little bit closer to graduation will be at Alliance at Benson. Alliance at Benson is a, an independent, self-directed model that we don't think is necessarily appropriate for students who need three, four years, even two and a half years of credits to graduate. It also has the advantage of a day-to-night schedule, we have our staff working four tens, so into the evenings, Monday through Thursday, no school on Friday. So that's, that serves a lot of our students who are older, working, maybe parenting, and that's how that model has kind of developed at Alliance at Benson. Alliance at Meek is primarily using career technical ed as an intervention to reengage students. However, we also have, as, we have persisted with that model over the years, we've seen the comprehensive high schools increase their career technical ed at the same time, and we've seen that we still have a population of students who are not being successful at the comprehensives, so we've added a lot of social-emotional programming to help them to, to help our students to access our core curriculum as well as our CTE. So, we have developed different models. If we needed to be in the same location, we could, you know, I'm sure that we would work on, on how we are serving needs of, the kind of social-emotional needs of students, hopefully accessing, having options to access career technical ed, and then those students who are a little closer to graduation, how to help them have the flexibility and kind of independence, so that they, they can work on what they need to, to graduate.
But it sounds like you wouldn't consider it preferable to be reunited.
Right. That's what I would want to know, what, is that a benefit to be reunited or not?
So, if, if those things are in place, there, there are some benefits to being together. You know, if there's the access to CTE, if there's the ability to still, you know, work on our, our kind of, right now, our two separate models, we could integrate them, and I think that would be great, to be together. So our understanding at one time was that, that there was a plan to have one Alliance high school at the Benson campus, but that more recently, the discussion has been about maintaining the two sites. So, you know, we are, we are hopeful that, that whichever way goes, that we will have access for students. There, there might be, I think that there's more advantages to being together.
Thing. Yeah. So, so I'm.
The other thing is, you're in a great school, Jim, and the only prospective side I've heard in the future would be Kenton, which is another great school.
But it's been, it's functioned as a high school for the last ten years.
Yes.
Also.
How big is that yet there?
Just to riff off that, so, thank you for letting me come and visit with the students before I spoke at the graduation at Benson of Alliance, and sort of the, I'd say, like, the three big topic areas for the students, aside from the staffing, wanting them to be more diverse, and what the students was, lack of access to any of the Benson CTE, sort of like, they got the space that was, whatever was available. And also issues related to not having sort of just the same access of what you'd have if you were in a high school. So, I had great things to say about their staff, but just being treated sort of as a second-class program, maybe by the district, not by the, necessarily by, not by the Alliance staff at all.
We have, we've looked at kind of enrollment at our two campuses over the last few years, and we have forty-eight students that we've served in the last few years who started at Benson High School. So, that's just the other piece that we think is really important, is that we have, at the Meek campus, for example, our highest number of students come from Madison, and our second highest come from Benson. So, there was always a discussion in terms of the Benson rebuild, if Alliance were present, that we would have our own entrance. And we find that our students have high social-emotional needs, and there is a need to, to have some ways that students can sort of develop a safe community that, that might be separate in, in many ways from Benson. So if we're talking about co-use of CTE, it might be in the evening, because we have a day-to-evening kind of program. Those are some of the considerations that we would be interested in, is still being able to obtain that kind of support that, that we have for our students. Alternative ed is, you know, flexible, it's personable, and, and it contains a lot of support. So those are, those are the three things that I think are most important for us to maintain.
Now, Lorna, both you and Corinna have told me multiple times over the last few years, like you just said, that given what you could accomplish for the kids in one location, it would be better to combine them, and that your ideal would be at Kenton, because it's got the spaces for CTE, or spaces that could be converted to CTE, that would give you the programming options. And also, since Alliance's kids have such a high need for, yes, social-emotional supports, and their big issue, which the board hears pretty much every time one of the Alliance kids comes and testifies to us, is anxiety, and that it's triggered by being among large groups of people, by being in environments that are less controlled, that are more noisy. It would be much preferable to have them in a self-contained building, because it's quieter, it's a smaller population, and it gives you the opportunity for the kind of contact that you need.
So, I don't know that, that I ever said that Kenton was the ideal location. I know that when you were at Meek recently, you had told me that that was kind of on the table, and.
You both did very strongly, the time I came through and toured about, oh, two years ago. You were both there then.
Right, right. So, so I don't know, I haven't been inside of Kenton, so I don't know if that is ideal or not. It sounds like the Archdiocese has done a lot of work on, on the facility. I know that, we've heard from our students, that central location is, is very helpful about Benson, our, you know, Alliance at Benson students. So I can't really, I can't really say if Kenton would meet all of the needs.
I would point out that, you know, it's more than likely central to your student population, which is gonna be coming from north and northeast, if they're from Benson, Madison. And Kenton has the huge advantage of being on the MAX line.
Right, right. We haven't, we haven't done an analysis, I would say, in terms of our students and transportation time.
Okay. That's also, incidentally, what the board's been hearing for years from facilities, was what their assessment would be of the best place for Alliance, was at Kenton.
Why is facilities so bad?
I think for those reasons. It's big enough, it'll be available in time, it's centrally located, and it's got great access to public transportation.
I think when we had this conversation in the Brown Improvement Committee, what they reported to us was, that was the only potential possible option, other than accommodation at Benson, not that it was necessarily ideal, but anyway.
Can I, sorry, can, can we separate out?
Yeah.
The building question from the program question? Because I, I, I'm still, I still have questions for the program. So correct me if I'm wrong. It has always seemed to me that the split in Benson, in Alliance, between Meek and Benson, was a function of space, not a pedagogical decision. Is that accurate?
I believe it's a function of history, in terms of the former Oak Village moving to the Meek site, and at that time, there were also programs at Madison and Grant. Some of those were consolidated and came into Alliance at Benson. So, there's a, there's a neighborhood agreement with the Concordia Neighborhood Association that pertains to Meek, and says that there will be no regular evening programming. That happened when the Oak Village program moved to the Meek site. So, we know that we have students with evening needs, so that was part of having two sites with.
Right, okay, so, so the programs have evolved.
Right.
Based on where they are. And, and it's, it's less a function of, hey gang, let's do two different programs with two different models, and put them in two different places, and more a function of, we have two different places.
That's kind of how our whole district is.
And then, things happen, right? Okay. Okay. So, so I for one am interested in hearing, we're spending a great deal of money on Benson, but more generally, I mean, we're doing all kinds of things differently now. So, I would be interested in hearing, if you had a blank slate and you could dream a little, what would it look like? And where would it be? I mean, not in terms of a building, but would it be two programs? Would it be one program? Would it be programs, you know, in high schools all over the district? I mean, I have no idea. We, we need to hear from you. What do students actually need?
And let me just say...
And it doesn't have to be right this very second.
Oh, no, I can dream quickly.
That is not a pie-in-the-sky proposition. That is exactly what we're asking all of our other school communities to do, and we haven't done that with this important school community.
Okay. So, we know from research that four hundred students is kind of a, is kind of an important threshold in terms of being able to deliver small school benefits up to about a population of four hundred. So, up to about four hundred, being in one site would be an ideal kind of proposition. When the, when Alliance stakeholders were involved in the focus groups and contributing to the EdSpecs discussion, we talked about a need for childcare, we talked about a need for a gym, we have a lot of homeless students, and even having showers in the school can be very helpful. We talked about having enough space for offices and conference rooms. And that was, that was kind of the idea, that that would be Alliance and Reconnection, along with kind of services from Teen Parent Services, virtual scholars, I think, would be present. So, yeah, if, if we all won that lottery a couple of weeks ago, I think that we would have been talking about one building up to about four hundred, that could serve up to about four hundred students with a lot of support services and CTE.
So, the two, the two Alliance programs together right now, how many students do you have?
I think we're about three hundred. We do, we do grow over the year because, you know, we have rolling enrollment at one site, cohort enrollment five times a year at the other.
And then the Reconnection Center, that's another, up to maybe forty-five. So, then fifteen thousand extra squirky could fit that program? I don't know who I'm asking this question to.
Definitely, I do not know.
Do two sweet C-size handle four hundred students? Jim, what's your thought? Do two sweets that are C-size handle four hundred students?
I do not know enough about the program to answer that question.
I, I know that the EdSpecs...
I just want to mention those two streets are not adjacent to each other, so in our current master plan, they're in different locations of the campus.
Okay. I believe the EdSpecs exist still. Paul Cathcart was the one who created that for us.
Okay. Can I ask another?
For Alliance specifically?
Yes.
We'd be looking at regular classroom space, not duplicating our CTE space, so you could think of what space we use now for regular classrooms, or non-CTE. How many, how many non-CTE classrooms do you have at Meek?
At Meek, so CTE is half-time in some cases, so we have seventeen teachers, including, you know, two who are half-time CTE, so maybe fifteen classes just at Meek that are not CTE.
And then perhaps that is...
We have seven classrooms and ten teachers, so we have, several of our teachers are doubled up in those classrooms.
It's like nineteen classrooms.
Yeah.
So, we could come back to you with that information too, if we were more closely aware.
Okay. Can I ask another question before we leave? So, the DART school.
Dart.
Dart. That's what I said. I was going, what are you, DART schools? What's a DART school? Okay, the Red Sox one, I'm allowed to be from Boston. So, is there any...
We're glow for the week.
Well, this is going to last more than a week. Is there any interaction between those students and any of the other programs?
We could gladly give up our seats for the DART administrators.
We have two DART administrations, and you can speak your specific questions.
Okay.
Mark, will you guys like to go forward?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Celine Bertram, and I'm the Assistant Principal for the DART schools.
And I'm Mark Van Homsen, the Principal for the DART program. And can you repeat your question for me again?
Okay, I'm gonna have to say the word. Is there any, is there any interaction between students in the DART program and Alliance or Reconnection?
So, there's not, not very often. So, we have had kids who are in the DART program do like some mainstreaming at Benson, but it's pretty rare. The kids in our program require a lot of supports, you know, just during the school days, so, you know, one of the things we'd want to make sure that we do is provide that for them in terms of staffing and what our class sizes look like. And it is true, though, that if we have a student who, you know, was possibly going to be transitioning out of the, like, the treatment programs that we work with, we can actually send like a classified repair support with them to a different program in the same building, or even across town, if we wanted to. So, there's opportunities there in terms of trying to, you know, have some more interaction, but typically, we run it as a, like, its own school, co-located on the campus.
Okay. So, so in terms of student needs, is it better for these students to be co-located with other programs, or would it be better for them to have a separate site?
I think it would be better for our kids to have a separate site. So, you know, when, a lot of times when our kids leave us, they might go to Alliance or the Reconnection Center, or MLC, or another small setting. So, you know, when kids leave us, you know, they go to, let's say, to Alliance and they have high social emotional needs, when they're with us, they're double that, right? So, our kids have huge anxiety, you know, huge fears of, you know, we have classrooms with sometimes five kids in them, and a parent and a teacher, and that's how they're successful. So, it's, it's that type of sight and sound wraparound support with therapeutic interventions from agencies. And so, you know, with our kiddos, so some of them on the upper levels, if ready towards graduation from treatment, not from school, might want to go participate, and we have a kiddo right now participating in the Benson GSA, the Gay Straight Alliance, and that's been really great for that kiddo. But we also have kids that walking in the front door at Benson would just paralyze them, and it wouldn't even be a possibility. And so, you know, looking at our kids' transition to Alliance, our kids who are not sped, use the Reconnection Center and Reconnection Services to find their next placement, it makes good sense for us. And it's always, our partnership at this point is in transition, so we hand our kids to them.
Will you explain how you're situated at Benson right now?
Yes, so we are in the very back corner at Benson on Fifteenth and Irving. Right now, our kids don't have a front door. They walk in through an alley, through a backside door, up an institutional stairwell that echoes. There are mice and cockroaches, and they share one bathroom. And mind you, like, these are kids who are in the DHS system and don't have homes. And we, as a district, had given, have given them their leftovers, and they're reminded of that every single day. So, whatever solution we come to and that you guys come to, let's take your idea and be the best in the nation, and give our most vulnerable and at-risk kids the best of any student here.
Absolutely.
Take that and champion it for our kiddos.
So, so I'm gonna ask you the same thing I asked the Alliance folks. You know, dream a little. If you could design your, the ideal space for your students, what would it be? Would it be, is co-location what you want, or do you want a separate site? Because I kind of heard two different answers.
Right.
I don't think co-location with Benson or with another big site is ideal for our kids.
So, it sounded like you were saying you connect, it's the Reconnection Program that you connect with.
And Alliance. Our kids go to Alliance when they're done, sometimes. I mean, they go all over the place, they're in Portland, so it's a small...
It might make sense, it might make sense to keep you tight with Alliance.
As long as they're not walking through the front door of Benson to get there.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the school could have a better feel to it, like, if you were on that campus, and like Serena's saying, in terms of what it feels like to get to school, matters a ton. You know, and it does sort of have, like, you're sort of going through the back entrance and how much do we matter, you know, kind of thing. That is definitely there. And, I mean, the reason I mentioned sort of, you know, it would be great if we had opportunities for integration, because for kids that are, you know, sort of going to transition out of treatment, you know, if we're in the same building, you know, as we are now with Alliance at Benson, okay, you know, you can have like a less restrictive or less, less supported school setting, let's try Alliance at Benson. Let's try a CTE class, you know, if that was an opportunity. And for the kids that we work with, you know, we, we do focus primarily on, you know, core academics when they're with us. I mean, almost all the kids are behind credit-wise when they get to us. So, I've tried to, you know, have a really solid focus on making sure that kids make, you know, progress toward a diploma. When they're with us, you know, they may get the diploma from someone else, because they may transition to a different school program before, you know, before they get to a diploma in terms of credits. However, what a cool opportunity for a student who, you know, five months ago was homeless, goes into treatment program, comes to us, gets settled, you know, can go to, you know, Alliance at Benson, or Alliance at Benson, we can be their home base, and they can go take a auto mechanics class, or a computer class. I mean, it's a life-changing reform, because we, five months before, they were on the street and had no hope, no support, no anything. So, so in terms of the opportunities that it could create for our kids, in terms of just, you know, sometimes it's, you know, asking the right question opens a kid's eyes to like looking at different things. Sometimes giving them this one opportunity, or this one experience can be like, wow, what I was thinking five months ago? I can think different because of what the school district did for me. Sure, there's kind of a mix here on, you know, own building, co-located. I mean, I'm more in the, the line of, if you're co-located the right way, I think that's, that is the difference. If, if it's co-located where, you know, we've got a couple of classrooms over here...
Or an afterthought.
You know, then that, that's very different in terms of what, what that feels like to kids.
So, I mean, I'm gonna violate my own principle here. We've, we've done co-location in this district, you know, for other kinds of programs. Generally speaking, it has not gone well, which isn't to say we can't do it better, it's just, it, it does, it does give me pause.
Well, I think that it's been, I, I shouldn't speak because I haven't been here, but what I hear, I don't know that there's been the thoughtful planning that they're talking about. So, I've heard all of the staff talk about and thoughtful...
Because I can share, like, in terms of, like, what was the planning that went into us going to Benson? Marshall closed. So, then kids went to Franklin. So, we got moved out of Franklin, and we had to go somewhere else. And before that, we were at Cleveland, in a classroom space that was, you know, inadequate, sort of tucked in a dark corner. So, there's this, this history of when bigger moves happen, we move because there's bigger moves. But it's not about, what do you guys need, you know, what do the kids in your program need? It's about what's left over.
Well, and what you talked about across the three programs is there, there's benefits of that kind of cross-programming, so it's not about the space and the location, like we co-locate a dual-language and an English-only, which are two separate programs, and there's not a lot of interaction between them. It makes more programmatic sense for your three separate programs, because there's some commonalities, you could work together.
Sure. And your, and your question about sort of, you know, pie in the sky, you know, in terms of, well, let's dream a little bit, as opposed to, you know, what are the kids gonna get stuck with this time?
Right.
And I, and I appreciate people's work at Facilities, folks, and trying to get all this to happen, but, but if, if the goal is to dream, let's change their life.
Right.
I mean, that would be the goal, is to change their life, and I think that, you know, what Serena's saying is true. I mean, it's, sure, the, the space that we're in now is sadly an improvement of where we've been in the past, but in terms of, if, you know, if there's a, I guess I wouldn't underestimate how important this is for our kids.
So, can we ask, can somebody from Facilities, the instruction side, share with, if I look at this, sort of the current master plan, it looks like a lot of modular buildings. Could you build two facilities essentially on the same, the same footprint? I'm gonna go right through.
Can you hear?
Come on up to the table.
So, conceptually, if you had...
Could, could we build two facilities on, on the existing site? I don't know anything that would prohibit that. The, the challenge or what we'd be faced with is that's not the plan now, so that would be a redirection, and we would have to plan for that.
And also, the plan now is predicated on building within the historic facade, hence the massive square footage that we have and the general layout that we have.
Correct.
We don't have any choice with that, right?
I guess, so the whole construct, I want to talk about this all night, the whole construct on a school of seventeen hundred, if you, it's very hard to do that without sort of decimating the other high schools. So, as you pull more students into Benson to fill it up, the huge investment that getting ready to make into Madison that we just made into Roosevelt, I mean, I don't think you can, you can build the, you can fill the building with Benson students without, I mean, I'm just looking at all the enrollment, you know, without emptying the other, the other building. So, if I look at that space, it seems a more effective use of our space to have the Benson program with a robust CTE focus, and then, you know, on that same site, to utilize it in a way to, you know, support others, other high school students, just, I mean, I don't see the numbers, how they work.
Well, truly, I've looked at the numbers many, many times with many people, and I have absolutely no confidence in the projections that we were given today at all, and I don't think the board should either. Year after year, every year, we are operating off of those same projections, we are laying off teachers in the spring, and then we're going out in the fall and desperately hiring back.
Actually, if you look, I'm looking back to 2012, this is data from...
I'm, I'm looking at the schools.
But I'm looking at the, where the Benson students are coming from, and back in 2012, they're drawing mostly from the Madison, the Roosevelt, there's some grants, but, I mean, I don't have any reason to believe that if, unless we do something to say, to, you know, somehow allocate a more formal set of, like, here's what it is, that you don't...
The cap, I mean, just a more finite cap.
Well, by, by school, because otherwise, I think we're in danger of, we just invested, committed, what, a hundred and eighty-five million dollars, or a hundred and ninety-five, I think, in Madison for a seventeen hundred a school, and then we're gonna be taking our, you know, a lot of students out there. So, I guess this, the quandary that I've always had, that I haven't heard from staff, and this goes back several years, of how if you lift the cap, you don't, and, and build a bigger school, how you don't have these, sort of ripple effect on these other high schools that we're trying to build a solid instructional core, so they have enough students and they can offer, you know, a wide variety of CTE and a wide variety of academic classes. So, and it's nothing negative to Benson, I just can't figure out how the numbers work without having impacts on these other, other schools as, as well.
Well, my point with the numbers and overall enrollment is that when I look at Metro's projections through to twenty... through to twenty thirty-five, we're gonna have no trouble at all filling up all of our high schools. The other issue is that if you want to minimize the number of kids we take from Roosevelt, or from Madison, for Benson, we could cap those. Although, I think you ought to be looking harder at why it is that so many kids are leaving those schools.
Well, that's why we're investing so significantly, and Roosevelt's a great case in point. Look at the enrollment growth at Roosevelt with the investment in CTE and the new facility.
I mean, I guess, we have to rely on some forecasts, and this is from the PSU's, this is from last year's ESAC, Vaughn's Stiglott Advisory Group, but, I mean, if, if these aren't the numbers we want to use, we, we have to use something. And, you know, I think just from a taxpayers' standpoint, I'd say, we, we, the previous board made a decision about Roosevelt, we built it to that size. We just made a decision about Lincoln, and, I mean, and Madison. And, I, I look at the numbers, and I don't see how you fill up the schools without emptying some other ones, and places where we just made some pretty significant investments, and so...
Yeah, I think it's fine to work off of projections. I can't find anybody who's actually willing to have a substantive discussion, a real fight over what the projections and the numbers ought to be. I think that what we have been seeing from PSU is grossly shy of what we're gonna need within the foreseeable future. So, there, there is that. And also, I'd remind you, and Joe, I put it to you too, since you've been looking back at the twenty fifteen resolution, the board and the superintendent have both publicly committed that our high schools are all going to be built at parity. So how are we gonna get a Benson that's at parity, when it's got fourteen hundred and fifty kids?
So can I just respond super quickly to that particular point? So, the, Julia, when you bring up that we're rebuilding our schools to seventeen hundred, that is not a coincidence. That number is based on what was put forth out of the high school redesign process, which, thank you Aurora, for bringing that back into the conversation. And that was predicated on having seven comprehensive high schools, and two focus option high schools. That's how we landed on that sweet spot of seventeen hundred, which is what informed the ed spec.
Because the initial twenty twelve bond number was fifteen hundred, and a year later, they came back and said, oops.
Oops. Right.
So, I...
I mean, it landed there, but if you look...
Seventeen hundred was a practical number, cause they were gonna open up Franklin and Grant with capacity for fifteen, and they knew they were gonna have seventeen hundred kids above.
You're right, it was revised, but it's within the sweet spot that was identified in the high school redesign, which, how do you get a robust course offerings? So that's how we landed on...
Was it as thirteen hundred was the...
Thirteen fifty, I think, for Roosevelt.
Yeah, which, kinda everybody else except for staff thought was way too low, but we digressed.
Well, so my, I guess my question is, aren't we here really to decide projections and all? What do we do with the programs that are serving the most vulnerable children? And, I mean, they deserve access to great quality programs and CTE. So for me, I mean, that's the more important piece than, than, we just have to figure out where they're going now, and let them know that they matter.
So, I was just going to maybe take another run at the same question I think you were trying to ask a little ago, about, about multiple sites on, on that site. And my question would be to Dan and Jen, with regards to the suite type design that you have, the modular type design that you have, isn't it feasible that you could actually utilize one wing for the classroom space, using the suites and, and do some conversion into the, the classrooms, the classroom designs that you have, to create classroom space? And then, and then as the needs for the school over time changes, that they could be converted?
If we have building space there, I mean, it, it's got the flexibility.
And I'm just wondering, if we identified, if we identified an area on that campus where we took that approach, and I'm looking at the square footage of this, that's the common denominator of the square footage there, and, and created a different entry point on that building, for the, for that camp, for that campus?
So, our current master plan, in our ed spec, which you will all receive copies of, it, it talks about the CTE programs and their space needs, as well as their exterior learning, access needs, and adjacencies to other CTE programs. So, that's, that's an important component, is that, you know, the last two, two and a half years, we've developed a site-specific ed spec that really meets the needs of the CTE programs, and how they work together. And our, our current master plan, that's been updated, what it does is it marries the core academic and the CTE, so that there's a lot more opportunity for collaboration. And so, so currently, all the, the suite sizes are associated with the specific needs of each existing program, and who they work most adjacent, who they work most closely with, based on their program. So, I'm not sure that I completely understand your question. It kind of sounds like, what you're referring to is like, starting over an, an entire wing, possibly? Changing.
So the building has been designed for... For specific components, curricular components? And, and so the spaces have all been designated for something, with the exception of the fifteen thousand, which are in two different places? Okay, so, so that's, that's not the impression that I had, based on the...
Right, and I, I have an updated plan that I had sent, but I don't think it made it into the packet that you have, but it is in the, it's all in all the materials for next week's workshop session. And so it, it explains how the master plan that went before the board in January of twenty seventeen, before the bond referral, it explains the progression between that master plan and where we, where we've landed, and, and why it has been updated.
Okay, so...
That would be helpful.
So it's theoretically possible to build in some co-location, but it would require some significant change in the design. Is that fair? I mean, theoretically, you've got enough square footage.
The other schools and programs, you mean, the other schools and programs?
Well, yeah, I mean, who we have.
From what I heard, yes, that's what.
But that, I mean, that's, that's not what we got from the staff report, though. We got that the spaces are flexible, and that these are students, and that we could figure it out. I mean, we also wanted to take into account, you know, things like a different entrance, and some modified spaces that would really best serve these students. But, but it sounds like spaces could be repurposed. These are just kids, and they're learning, and, you know, the spaces are somewhat flexible. We can figure it out, whereas twenty percent design, I mean, we're in design development, we're not even in design, really.
Yeah, we're, we're in master planning, so we're looking to start schematics, as are the formal design processes next month. And there is flexibility within the design, I think, for, like manufacturing, for example. Manufacturing is going to be there, it needs to be somewhere in one of the suites that fits it. Now, that's a couple different options where that, it's gonna go, but it still needs to be there, unless someone makes the decision, so that's why we're talking about, the master plan has, you know, three phases for suites ID, or whatever it is, and there's programs planted those, and they could switch around, but they still need to be there.
Right.
The flexibility isn't that they're just gone.
Right, right, right.
But you're, that example is the least flexible thing, manufacturing.
But you would also need to build in...
Not less so than automotive, or instruction.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
You'd also need to build in adjacency for access and dark, and, I mean...
And we don't, I mean, I don't currently understand what the space ramifications and the sizes that are needed for those programs, simply cause they haven't been in the project to date. So I, it's, it's a little hard for me to, to answer.
Okay, okay.
What I see is doing is what we've been doing for at least six years, which is facilities, trying to plan program around facilities, and it's driving me crazy, and I think it's a huge mistake. We don't have a district-wide CTE plan, and yet we're planning suites, and you're doing the best you can with what you've been given, that it's not the way this district should be operating. And, and again, this isn't a criticism of what you're doing, this is criticism of we, what has been decided in the past, but the hell of that too. Going forward, I wanna see a, a CTE plan before we build Benson. I wanna see some really good, you know, visionary futuristic stuff to see, yeah, a construction program there, I know we need it. And what else that we haven't thought of? Because right now, it's, it's, a lot of it seems to be, well, continuing to do what we're doing, which is not terrible, but is it the best?
Right.
Corrupted by what's there.
Let's have, let's do that plan, and I don't, if we don't do that plan, we're gonna be, we're gonna pay later.
I agree, we're looking at such a significant investment to last for generations.
And that goes the same for all our MPG programs too, is thinking about, what's our vision for these programs? I, I look at the projections, flawed or not, Wilson is a ticking time bomb. You know, talk about blowing right through seventeen hundred, according to this projection. Unless we get a couple hundred Wilson kids to go to Benson somehow, I don't know if there's like what, twenty five.
Highly likely. Two, it's not...
Thirty-one. So all of that, I would like to see us do first. And what that could mean is, as you point out, is a delay of a year in construction, and probably a bunch of staff going, you know, doing, we did all this planning, kind of, get a bunch of it aside, and I appreciate that. The delay would be, at current construction prices, would be ten million dollars, I think is the estimate. It would mean we wouldn't start construction until twenty twenty-two. Do we really think the construction prices are gonna continue to be sky-high for four more years? They might even be lower than that.
And I think it makes sense, because we have to have a planful way of providing the programs that we need, that we want to have there, and not cram them into configurations.
Dan, also, now, the Office of School Modernization has been saying, for a couple of years, that there's no way to rebuild Benson with the MPG programs still on the campus. The most...
During construction.
During construction. The most students you could possibly conceivably house would be a thousand.
Right.
And still swing on site.
Right.
So, where we put these programs is a very real question, and it hasn't been looked at, at all, that I...
But that, that also shouldn't drive where they ultimately are going to be, but...
It doesn't have to, but it would be a pretty significant disrupt, multiple pretty significant disruptions. And I think we should come up with something that's, yes, better. I think that would be good.
I agree.
Thank you for confirming that.
Can I ask, there's a detail in the report that I don't always track up, which said admissions, admissions process for Benson?
An application, similar to now with a lottery.
So, so nothing really different, which is write an essay, I think, but that's not...
But it's not a criteria for admission.
It's not a screening, it's not a screening. Just wanted to...
Can I... Can I ask a question about option B?
Yes.
Which we really haven't talked about at all. And, so this is the hybrid, so I just, when Julia was talking about the numbers, can you come up with even a ballpark sense of what, what the impact would be in terms of the size requirements, if we did a hybrid? So you'd have, you'd have two grades full of comprehensive, right? We'd have four grades full of comprehensive, and then you'd, in addition to that, you'd have kids from other schools. So, what, I mean, what kind of enrollment would we be talking about then, and what kind of space would be needed?
Well, we can control that by total deciding...
Well, you can, but, I mean, if you're gonna do a hybrid, then you need to have enough space to do a hybrid, and not have it be limited to, you know, the lucky few.
They'd be shared, so kids would be taking, accessing, kids coming in would be accessing the same classes that the full-time Benson students, so it's just a question of however many co-op students you wanna allow, then you have a commensurate reduction of your, for your students.
The states for the intense CTEs, it'd be afternoon, it'd be evenings, it'd be integrated with the same students. It depends about how you wanna schedule it. Will that, with that comes a whole jigsaw, though, from their home campuses, right? There's athletics and other transportation and other considerations that we need to think about.
And Benson has looked at this very hard, multiple times, over many years. And these models just don't work in Portland public, for a whole host of reasons. Any afternoon activity that's done at Benson, that immediately aces every kid who participates out of high school athletics at their home campus, there's no way to get them back in time. The transportation barriers during the day in this town are enormous. Kids can't get from outline campuses to Benson. And also, it's simply not in the interests of any of the principals of our comprehensive high schools to have their kids participating in a part-time program at Benson. Kids can do this now, if they want. And I've said before, to many people in this room, in living memory, it's been one very motivated girl from Franklin, who wanted to participate in the auto program. She was able to make it work, but she knocked herself silly doing it. The other big barrier is that, you know, the first two years at Benson are very important. You're picking up skills that are critical for being able to make your last two years successful. And kids would be coming in without that experience. We can do it with sophomores, Curtis does it with sophomores very, very well. Juniors and seniors, unless they've got something really special in their background, that's not gonna work. The, the best, best model for that in the whole metro area is Saban Schellenberg. And they have been very upfront with our OSM staff, and with our architects. If they had to do it, they'd be doing it like Benson.
So there are benefits to a four-year pathway, I'm kinda with Scott and maybe others, right now, in that we're conflating a lot of different balls in the air here. One is, what's the most accurate projections that we can reasonably plan around? And I don't know what those might look like, because a lot of unexpected things are happening in the Portland metro area, and I don't think anybody's interested in decimating schools that are just getting, starting to see an uptick in their numbers. So, and I also know, we could never fill it with seventeen hundred Benson only students before twenty twenty-four or five, because there can't be more than a thousand up there, if we're gonna sweep them from one side of the building to the other. So, we have a bit of an on-ramp to think about, you know, how do the demographics change in this town?
And if, if we want to, the district, the board, future boards, we can make the on-ramp, as long as we want to or need to.
We can turn on the faucet as, as much as we want to, between now and then and afterwards. I guess what I'm more guided by is, is sort of the question that Rita and others posed, is, we have, we have a bucket of resources we wanna be good stewards of, but if we're guided by what's best for kids, and programmatically what are their needs, I heard the question humanly posed...
I heard the question continually posed, this is your minute on stage, what's your idea? And what kind of a setting would that look like, right? Well, there's gonna be a different economy of scale to integrate our two alliance programs in one setting that's very flexible, that gives them access either onsite or nearby to begin to reintegrate if that's appropriate. For our dark kids, I heard something that's almost a little bit more residential and therapeutic in nature. It doesn't, it doesn't need to always feel like you're encroaching on someone else's campus, it's on the Benson campus. I heard you describe what that would look like and there's a few things you would want, it'd need to be central and accessible and have other amenities that a comprehensive high school isn't used to having them. It'd feel a little funny for a kid to be doing their laundry maybe. But is there a online setting that would be built custom for them somewhere nearby, maybe across the street even? Maybe we spend the ten million, we would spend delaying the project on buying next new place, I don't know. But could we think about that? And staff also was trying to devise a recommendation based on the constraints we have today, trying to dig up artifacts and what was done, you know, a number of years ago that we, there's probably other pieces we don't know about and maybe the board holds. And this is just our second discussion on this topic. The only other building that we've talked about is the Kenton site, which by coincidence happens to fall also in June twenty twenty-one is one that we would be recovering potentially and be ready to move into over the summer. But I just don't want to be led by these facility constraints and designing or even with a space that's built and customized to, you know, value the students that attend there. This is why we had this drama last year and I do not want to make that mistake a third time. And I don't want to have this discussion absent giving our principals a certain opportunity. If you move to share any one thing, I know this puts you in a different old spot, principal, but if you want to weigh in in any way, you don't have to offer the complete solution, but you have to juggle all of us as you're trying to lead our school there.
It's, it's a lot of juggling, I'll admit. So, which question is this? Is this the dream, is this the, where we're at right now?
In fairness, you should have the same question and opportunity to answer it around, what is the ideal of Benson?
So, when I got to Benson six years ago, one of the things that I was excited about was a principle of a building. And I have my own building and I was excited about that and I would be able, you know, to run the show and kind of be able to dictate what's gonna happen in that building, make macro changes, work with staff, work with students. And then, I never knew that there were programs in Benson when I got there. I did not know.
Other duties as a sign.
No one ever gave me that memo. So, you know, it was, it was a steep learning curve on learning how to work with those programs because when I got there, the staff made it very clear that these programs are handling what we're trying to do. It was because of space, it was because of resources. And each of those programs had an administrator and I was working with those administrators. And I was brand new and I was like, okay, well, let's see if we can figure this out. And I started working with the other principals of those programs. And then, I started to realize that, you know, this is gonna be a little bit more difficult than I envisioned because there was no place for these programs to go. There was just no place for them to go at all. So with that being said, I started working with the staff on, they're not going anywhere. And we have to live with that and we have to figure it out and we have to work together. And I get it, we're gonna fight over an auditorium, we're gonna fight over the cafeteria, we're gonna argue about who gets to use the building in the evening. But because of being able to work with those adults who are overseeing these programs, we kind of pieced it all together and we've been making it work for the last six years now. And it's been very difficult sometimes, but at the same time, I keep one thing centered and that's students, right? And so, I'm not gonna lie, you know, I think I'm the only principal out of the nine of us that share space. And, and I don't have my own building, I work with all the other program administrators, I call up David, you know, hey, I need the building for tonight, what are you guys doing? We sit down, we talk about it, we negotiate some stuff and we make it happen, right? I know that during the summer, summer scholarship takes over, that's fine. We go into our office during the summer and we just work and the other two thousand kids take over the building and I allow the summer transition to just happen. So, we've, we've adapted. I know that without these other programs having a place to go, you know, my core, who I am as a person, I just can't say, well, let's just boot them out. They gotta go somewhere, but it shouldn't be at Benson, you know? As a, as a principal, as a leader, as someone that's leading students and staff, I can't do that. I'm willing to try to figure this out, once something is figured out and then we will go from there. If Benson is comprehensive and it's all Benson, we'll make it work. If Benson is comprehensive and there's six other programs in there, we're gonna figure it out. I'm leaving most of that to you all to.
Wise.
To guide us because I know what, what my staff wants, I know what a lot of people want, but then I also know what's reality, right? And so, once it gets figured out, we will go from there and make it work.
Okay, but this is the one time. The one time where you get to say.
Well, that was a good answer.
You know, it was very diplomatic, I'll give you that. But, you know, what would be in the best interest of students going to Benson as Benson?
As Benson? As Benson only?
Well, like, no, I mean, like, I mean, we're, we're building a Benson polytechnic, right? What does that mean to you?
That's hard, I mean, it is because if we're building a Benson polytechnic and these programs don't have a place to go, then I can't answer that. I mean, I truly can't. If we're building a Benson polytechnic and that's all figured out, then we're gonna build a great school with great staff and students that are excited about CTE because we have a lot of students in that building. Without the CTE component, they don't exist.
It would be at the Lions.
Well, but, but they're also, I talked to a lot of the kids as to why they chose Benson when they could go to their neighborhood schools and they made it very clear, I just wouldn't function well there, right? Benson allows me to build stuff, it allows me to get creative, it allows me to go to internships, it allows me to make robots to go up and down the hallway. I can't sit in a room with a book and make this work. But at Benson, I can build something and we're still using the same concepts. So, if the programs have a place to go, then I say we build this, this castle that I'm trying to envision. If the programs don't, then we have to figure out a way to make this work, to incorporate. Because in the end, I'm thinking about, when I started trying to figure this out, I went to a lot of people that were responsible for these programs and I had some conversations with them. And then I got a chance to work with their kids and have more discussions and so, you know, these are kids, right? These are kids and so, I'm just concerned with where this is gonna go, right? Because at the macro level, I know that I don't really have a decision in this, but it's, it's gonna be difficult if kids are being booted, right? And now, if you have a home for them, let's make it work.
Do you have an opinion on the hybrid model?
That's gonna be a tough one. You know, I've, I've only known Benson as a CTE comprehensive. I've never, you know, I've done, I've gone out to the Schellenberg, I was taking classes out there years ago, working on my license. I've gone to the other one that was in Salem and I've seen it, fascinating, right? But I've only done a comprehensive model. Can I adapt? I probably could. Could the staff adapt? That's, that's gonna be tough. The staff at Benson and the community that supports Benson, they love that school. That school has set up a lot of people to do a lot of things in their life. When I talk to alumni, they don't talk about college, they talk about Benson. They talk about what Benson did for them when they were fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds and how that has set them up for the rest of their life. And they can't see any, I never went to Benson. When I was in high school, I felt that it was, for me, it was just me personally, I thought Benson was impossible to get into based on what they were doing. I loved Roosevelt, it was great for me, it set me up for my future. I just never envisioned ever trying to get into Benson, I just thought it was impossible back then. So, I've learned to listen to the staff, listen to the alumni and hear their stories about why they just want Benson as it is. Now, there are some things that, that we have to change for the future, like 21st century equipment and catch up with everybody else. You know, some things have to change. But the model that's been in place for these ex-students, the students that are there now and the staff, that's all that they don't for all these years. So, that's gonna be a tough, very tough sell if it goes away from comprehensive. Just being honest.
But that's, but we're charged with the responsibility of building something for a hundred years. And also, I mean, that doesn't have any bearing on the design. If these kids are all there all day or if some of them are coming in half-day, so.
Because I would look at the things that you just articulated about what makes Benson such a strong program, I'm really an anchor for a lot of students. There's a lot of things that could transfer beneficially to the kids and the students in the multiple pathway programs. It's not exactly like Benson, but the same things of like, you know, I wanna do things that I can make and see and it's more hands-on learning. It seems like the things that make Benson great for a lot of Benson students would be great for a lot of students in other places as well. So it seems like it's less about keeping just like the Benson brand just for the kids in the Benson program, but like, how can you take the things that are part of the greatness of the Benson brand and make it available to other students? While at the same time they get another support. It's just a different way of looking at it.
Again, Julia, the way you would have to do that would be to fund this district by program rather than by enrollment. Because every kid who would take advantage of that is gonna be taking away FTE from their homeschool. And the principals.
Talking about the multiple pathways, not the hybrid.
That's exactly what my interest in having them be there is, all of the things that you have to offer, they get the best of both worlds. There are specialized programs and the ability to do those hands-on and the options.
And has that question been asked to the MPG programs? I mean, some of the stuff that I heard was that if, if they were a part of Benson and some of the programs, it would probably do more harm than good, just based on the stuff that we do in the building. If students want to be a part of it, sort of what Director Anthony was saying, and they're not coming in as freshmen, we could tweak it a little bit, but we would have to get innovative because we do for those first two years, allow kids to kind of rotate through all the programs, we do nothing. When I first got to Benson, I was concerned that, you know, there's all this machinery in this school. How do we, and the kids aren't chopping off hands and killing each other with hammers and whatever. It's because of the stuff that they've done from the moment those students walk into that building. Set them up for when they're juniors and they choose that major, they're, they're not worried about the safety issues or concerns anymore. So now, if kids are coming in at a more advanced age, we would just have to get innovative with how do we catch them up?
And I think that that's a possibility.
Right, isn't that what we do at all our other.
I know, I think that it's always about.
Like if you're at Franklin or Roosevelt, you're taking a CTE class, you haven't had your freshman sophomore year, so you're starting, I mean, you're theoretically starting at a different place.
Other comprehensive, Rank used to have an auto shop, Franklin used to have an auto shop, I believe. So, I'm, I'm, I want to hear more. I'm not saying this is the way it is. And I would like this to really thoroughly explore those models and we might end up totally agreeing with you all. But I think, I feel the need to, to do that exploration.
And I'm not saying it can't be done, all I'm saying is, we'd have to sit down and really look at the model that's in place now and how is that tweaked or changed to allow students to come in at later ages than freshman sophomore? Because we do get some upperclassmen in, every blue moon. Every blue moon.
And I want to make a counterargument to Paul's point of, well, another high school principal would have no, you know, would see it as a loss to lose kids for every other day to Benson. But right now, they're losing kids to Benson full-time. What they would get is have those kids back or have, have time with those kids.
Right.
So, you, there would be give and take.
Like the pill-up, like Jefferson dancers, I mean, most of the kids are pill-up students.
Not anymore?
No. No, that's true.
It used to be.
They don't have.
Not anymore?
No.
Not anymore?
Nope.
But, okay, so, so going back to your earlier point that just because we've done it a certain way, doesn't mean we have to continue to do it that way just because. I, I don't think the interests of principals should be driving this. I don't think the athletic schedule should be driving this. You know, I think, I think the best interests of kids should be driving this and.
So, I heard each set of leaders up here say, a dedicated, customized location that can tailor itself to the needs of our students is the most, is the most ideal. We certainly want to take care of the needs of all of our students, but especially our most vulnerable. We need to be thinking about the message that we're sending if we're accommodating in a way that is also meeting their needs. We do want to build Benson to be that flagship CTE school. Should, all of our programs should sort of be equipped in a castle that is tailored to them. But the board wants to give the direction to free up our minds a bit and think about, well, what does that look like? For all of our alternative programs, for our multiple pathways. We haven't even talked about a longer-term vision for a recovery high school, where would that fit in?
For which?
Is it, I'm sorry?
Recovery.
A recovery high school, for instance, that we want to build.
Drug and alcohol support.
Right, and keep working on our high school redesign and quality educational experience so that we're not losing students. That's why we're choosing an alternative program, for instance. But for students who we might otherwise lose, certain programs we're working with, imagine if the conditions were still more ideal. How much more success do these students have and start talking about their post-secondary plans?
So do we need a resolution to say, let's go in this direction now?
I think that's the point of these discussions is to sort of have these out loud and to see what direction does the board want to offer.
Well, I'm not sure we're ready for a resolution.
Well, and I also want to say that this.
Okay, but we're, we're on a crash course for December eleventh.
Right.
So, we either, we gotta, we might not be ready for a resolution tonight, but we gotta be ready in two weeks. I mean, it's, we gotta decide something by December eleventh.
Well, we really need to look at what the Office of School Modernization has put together and what their specs look like now.
So, do you see a bit more detail about the facility design? And you've gotten a glimpse of in previewing that this is modular, these are built-in suites. We're gonna keep working on our CTE plan, but there's gonna be flexibility there by deciding this thing even opens its door. We'll be clear what the industry says we should be leaning our kids towards. And it sounds like we need to dust off some ed specs that were worked on for Alliance as well. So, I'm kinda curious how those ed specs are met by co-locating them on the Benson campus in these spaces. So, that's also another question that we need to look at.
You know, the other thing, I just want to mention with regard to, you know, you mentioned a resolution. I mean, when we look back at the resolution from twenty fifteen where we said build Benson to seventeen hundred, it does not preclude Alliance or multiple pathways there. The direction to staff was to come back with a report about Alliance's relocation, including Benson. And I can tell you that the majority of that committee wanted to house, but that probably Benson was the best site for that.
Well, I voted for that and that was my, that was my understanding.
And, but we never got that. And, but we never got that report, and then everybody left, and then, you know, just kinda fell off the trap. So, do, doing this in this moment is not contradictory to any, um, set direction.
No, but if we need, um, CTE direction for Benson by March, and we don't have a CTE plan or any idea how CTE at Benson is gonna interact with CTE and all of our other comprehensives, then we're letting a facilities timeline driver pedagogy up the other way around.
And I, I think the, the last thing-
That's why it's, it's like, if we're gonna hold up the train, we gotta make the decision pretty soon. Or if we're gonna just say, go for it, we gotta go for it.
So, would the choice of CTE, any additional pathway matter if the suites are flexible to contain whatever we decide in the future?
So, they're flexible up to a point. So, they're flexible up to a, a space size.
Sure, sure.
Up to a point, then they need to start putting in the machining and what that looks like. So, that's why they're saying, we still have the flexibility. Even if the board decided on December eleventh, yes, move forward with the plan as is, we could, we still have until March nineteenth to decide-
Within those design suites.
Within those, within those design suites-
Right.
What that opening day program would be.
And if we're still talking about kids, um, you know. No, I, I mean, we had our eighth grade info night and we counted. I mean, we did. We, we did a visual, we did the number of seats that we have in the lower auditorium. And so, I started at six-ten, and we counted, it's been over a thousand people for eighth grade info night. And, you know, I, I have to let them know that a third of you, alright, or maybe half, are not gonna get in. And you have to know that going into this, that there's only three hundred slots available. Um, and so, and I take that on because then we give them the tour, and then I deal with all the parents that have the clarifying questions as to, why is that? Because I feel like they should know that night instead of a month later when they get the letter or whatever. So, um, people love Benson. They love it. You know, it's, and I don't have to do anything. I just kind of run the ship. I don't have to go and present. I don't have to, you know, I, I love my emails and, or, or my newsletters that I send out once a week. Um, but Benson just speaks for itself.
Um, okay, so, December eleventh is a drop deadline for the building?
If we're go, if our plan is to stay on the current timeline and trajectory of the master plan that's gonna be presented to you next week, yes.
Okay. Um, would, so I'm curious about the hybrid model. Cause, I mean, that strikes me as kind of the best of both. So, that appeals to me. But, but I, I don't know that, okay, in order to make a decision on, just on December eleventh, do we need to have made a decision about fully comprehensive or hybrid? Okay.
Well, but you can also, that's not an either-or, because, um, hybrid could be fully comprehensive. We kind of, we need to make a decision about comprehensive.
Well, okay, so, only comprehensive.
Correct.
Okay, so, only comprehensive or hybrid?
Right. Or co-op. Or, or, cause you could also have a, a hybrid that is comprehensive because you could have a thousand students that are there all day, and you still have the comprehensive elements, and then you have thirteen hundred or however many that are just coming in.
That is a hybrid one.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you could have a hybrid model that, where the students that are there all day are in, you know, I guess, well, I guess, if they're, if you're gonna have students, it, it's not determined whether, if you have a hybrid, whether you're gonna have all those other comprehensive elements. Because at least theoretically, you're based on other models in the country, you still could have even your all-day students accessing athletics or those other things at their homeschool.
Kinda comes down to- Kinda comes down to your intent on the design, on what you choose to house on the Benson campus.
Right.
The, how much space do you wanna utilize for a hybrid model?
Right.
Is it going to still accommodate space for these alternative programs?
Is it gonna have absolutely everything that every other comprehensive high school has?
Right. And I think that that, in this decision, is important to consider. Because, right, as we're looking at a hi, if we're looking, right, if we're looking at a hybrid model, does that make sense if Benson is only offering three unique programs? Right? Because students would have access to the, their other programs at the homeschool.
Right.
If Benson is offering programming that is different than every other comprehensive, then maybe a hybrid makes sense. Another thing to consider in models around the country, right, and again, and I'm not saying better or worse than a current model, just flexible models, and is that homeschools offer, uh, the principals' courses, or the, the basic CTE courses that then have, can lead into upper-level courses across different clusters. So, for example, you could take a concepts of engineering course, and then still go into electrical or computer science or engineering, something that has standards that, because essentially, essentially at a, a principal's level, a basic level, there's a lot of skills or basic skill-building that could still lead into different possible pathways that maybe is a pathway at their homeschool, or is a pathway that they chose to go at a unique program. Again, other possibilities.
So, it, to me, if-
Well, just a question on that. So, would the compri, other comprehensive high, comprehensive high schools have to tailor their CTEs to make this hybrid model work per se? I don't know if that's that question.
Mostly with regards to standards, okay. So, if you have shops-
Yes.
You know, and, and if the person wants to make the transition to the higher-level things in shops, and there's gonna be some-
At Benson.
Yeah. Or just even, you know, whatever, maybe the school doesn't offer everything that Benson might in that area.
Okay.
So, that, we wanna make sure that there's some standard practices across the board. So, like Curtis said, they don't cut their hands off, right?
Right.
And those, right. So, that they have the proper training to take those next steps. And so, we just need to standardize the instruction that way. And that goes a little bit to the planning for a CTE program.
Right, cause like all the high schools will have, I mean, there'll probably have to be some work to go into that.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yes, yeah.
So, alignment, so, like, this, the programs that we're offering at the different high schools, uh, looking at the course progression and making sure that that initial course has these skills standards required, these safety standards taught during those courses.
When's the district-wide CTE plan gonna be available tomorrow?
So, we're starting the process.
Right.
Um, so, we are, um, working with some experts that come in and help us do that needs analysis and mapping. So, we're hoping to have a contract to, to you all, um, November twenty-seventh. And our, the implementation plan for the master plan, we're hoping to have for next summer, is the current timeline. Do you have an update on the timeline for that today?
That was it. We talked with them today. So, we're shooting for a contract on November twenty-seventh.
So, I'm just thinking about the feasibility of what you were saying, Scott, having a district-wide CTE plan to make some of these decisions when we're talking about this.
So, that's, it, this, this is the information that I can give, to the best of my knowledge, at this time.
Yeah.
Um, hoping that it can help guide you in the decision you need to make by December eleventh. If you want a more comprehensive report and information, we need a little bit more time.
Yeah.
Will that have a CTE component for all of our multiple pathways graduation?
Yes.
Yes, the first two columns.
By the way, the, um, ed options review report is this one-page paper that you do have.
That's it?
Well, that's what I kept.
That's the report?
Right.
That's the report.
That is.
Oh, so, yeah.
I was.
Yeah.
Yes, we have seen this.
So, um, just thinking about the-
It's covered for us.
Going forward, is one of the things that I'll wanna see is a, um, sort of the enrollment planning. Um, because when I asked about this last year, when we were getting ready to make the recommendation on a bond referral, it was like an informal sort of discussion among the high school principals. And I'd like to hear from the other high schools, and I'd also like to look at the data going, you know, the data-to-date, and then what that, those trends have been, and what we think the impact will be on the other schools versus just looking at Benson in isolation. Because as a citywide school, it's, you can't look at that, that way. Um, so, I don't, I don't wanna see some sort of-
Enrollment trends across all the comprehensives?
Right, well, and-
And projections for thirty years.
And projections, like, how, how we're gonna manage this and not be, you know, how we can get so there's more than single digits from Lincoln and Wilson, you know, coming to Benson.
So, we don't have any demographers on staff, but we wanna look and see what Metro, whose projections looks at. Oh, I beg.
No, 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 no. I just, last June, I was in the process of setting that up for a board meeting. And I talked to Charles Reinersen. He said August would be great. Uh, I asked staff to see who from the city would come, or Metro, or whoever, and it's late October. Um, to me, there's like an analytical order.
Right.
Yep. And, and the enrollment piece is like one of the first steps. And this is, again, why the facilities thing is driving this, to me, in a, in a process that doesn't serve our kids well.
I, I don't feel like we're gonna have, just where we are right now, that we're gonna have enough information to make an informed decision by December eleventh.
I agree.
On the, on the size of the Benson enrollment?
Pardon?
On the size of the Benson enrollment?
Well, the size and where they're coming from, and what impact that will have on others, other schools, and what, what we plan to do about that. Cause I, so, I don't know this-
If we went to Plan C, then the Benson space would be way more CTE space and way less regular classroom space.
Well, that is true, yeah.
And, again, I don't know if that's the best way to do it. But if, if it was doable, to me, that says we're serving twice as many kids in that space if we're doing an A-day, B-day. I see that as a clear positive. Whether that's a workable program for a number of things, I don't know. But that's, that's why I wanna see an analysis of that. And that's, you know, instead of you telling six hundred kids, you're not getting in, not only is it a bigger facility, but it's twice as many, or if it's a hybrid, fifty percent more kids in this district getting an intensive CTE experience.
I agree that we would be missed to make a decision without having a thorough consideration of that. And the other piece that I like about that is that, um, it, it allows more kids the opportunity to go deeper. Because right now, um, in our, in the CTE offerings that we have in our high schools, if they are programs that are equipment-intensive, generally speaking, kids are just getting a taste because there's not an economy of scale for the equipment that they need. So, for those type of industries, um, it, it can allow kids to have a four, uh, kids from all different high schools to have a four-year, um, experience when they otherwise wouldn't.
So, a district hub is an entirely different thing. But I'm, I'm hearing that that's off the table for some of the reports.
I guess, part of it is, it seems like there's been a lot of planning happening, even though this is our first real discussion. Um, and it's planning based on some historical conversations. And so, when I, my impression was, when we were having the discussion, it was, provide guidance on that sort of design, not sign off on the plan because you need to go on the eleventh, so, um.
Well, the programming staff are coming in on the facility bond, and so, we're, we're all sort of- But it's been, I, I think it was either twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen, there was the initial bond committee that said, what high schools do we wanna do next? And Benson popped to the top, and it was, and we need a CTE plan. And, so, here we are. And that's, we've been talking about this for decades.
Well, we've been talking about it. We just haven't done anything about it. And, I mean, this has been in the works for how long? I mean, Benson started to do planning under the twenty-fifth bond.
So, this, this was the primary-
This has been in the works for like three years already.
This was the primary work plan of the school movement bond committee after this resolution to figure out all the underlying issues at Benson. And then, that was the place where staff was gonna bring those issues. And then that work just came to a screeching halt. And this is essentially the first conversation, deep conversation we've really had about it in a year and a half.
We've been needing a plan for, for three years.
Three years, yeah.
Seventeen hundred Benson students, that's been, and we've been bringing up the resolution for about two years. After about a year, we realized, are we still moving forward with this? And it was made clear, just keep moving forward. And so, headwind down and get moving forward.
I mean, we've been on all of us. Yeah, three years, yeah.
Well, I, except for in the bond staple advisor group, we had a long discussion about whether, um, you know, we should be building Lincoln for seventeen hundred, and we knew there was gonna be more, and whether we should be building, um-
I think it is.
Just saying, but there, there was, it was not like, we're all signing off on this. It was sort of like, just approve it, and we'll figure it out later. Like, there wasn't, there were, there were no official structured answers on the whole enrollment issue, cause I asked them. And I have, I have all the, all the answers, sort of answers that I got. But it, it was all kind of like, we're gonna figure that out later, and I'm afraid, but we gotta get figured out before we move ahead.
Well, but, but the same token, there was no CTE plan either. So, frankly, why Benson was put on the twenty-seventeen bond is a mystery to me. We were in no way ready.
Well, there's some pretty significant seismic issues with the building that needed to be addressed.
Its condition is far and away the worst. It's not just the dark program that's got mice and cockroaches. It's the whole building. It's all of the kids in that same circumstance every day.
I, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be rebuilt, and I'm not saying conditions are suboptimal. What I'm saying is, if, if we're planning to build, if our intention is to build a premier CTE high school, and we don't have the vaguest idea, when this went on the bond, we had no idea what kind of program was gonna go in there, never mind what was gonna happen with the rest of the district. I'm sorry, that, that was, that was an error.
Here we are, where we're gonna-
Your clear direction about next steps, and what you need and information that we can reasonably put together for you to have the next conference, which is supposed to be helpful to know.
So, uh, an initial step would be enrollment projections, so that we understand what's, if there's different models out there, city, metro, PSCU, kind of understanding the different assumptions in each model, um, would be a good starting point.
I would like an analysis of the hybrid.
Yeah, and, uh, like, model it out, like, what would that look like? I just wanna put some parameters on what you'd say that, yeah.
I mean, sort of general, a general idea.
How would it get operationalized?
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't have to be all, you know, all got eyes dotted. But, um, but in particular, in terms, what kinds of implications it would have on building planning.
And to me, that means, um- And to me, that means an analysis of hybrid in a building with all the elements of a comprehensive high school, and hybrid in a building without all of those elements, because your full-time students have made a choice that their priority is CTE.
So, we'll, we'll set aside the cultural change factors, because when we say a hybrid model, that alternate schedules, it means every high school in the portfolio would need to be on a standard schedule.
And we don't need to know what that would look like. We just need to know if anyone thinks it's actually possible.
Right, okay. That, that's just a small example, but.
Sure.
Aren't all our high schools on an A-B schedule?
Well, an A-B, but not, not the same bell schedule, not the same kind of,
There's hours, the bell schedule is all different. And flexes in the morning and the evening. That, that's one thing I'm also, like, following this too, that I would like to know how that would also be feasible, because just knowing my schedule, and like, comparing with the different schools, how would kids from all the comprehensive, comprehensive high schools work into their schedule also traveling and going to Benson? You know what I mean? Because you're, you're battling with two different administrations. Well, no, I should say battling, but you're working with,
How does it matter?
Take it off the recording. I'm not gonna say battling, but you're, you're working with, you know, two administrations. You're working with two different buildings. I think that's something that a lot of students would have to be used to, and take some time to get to know how to work with.
We're trying to make sure where all these factors are.
Kids at North Black must do that. So, they're, all the high schools are on the same schedule. They've got,
I'm not saying it's not possible.
Right.
Right, this is not rocket science.
It lists out what the factors are, that that's the will of the board. It would be so.
And if you're going to be looking at those things, I think you also need to be looking at what kind of quality we're going to get out of the program. Because I've been looking at career and technical ed designs from all across the country for years now. The way that Benson has worked has been the best. Where other schools have duplicated that, they have succeeded. And where they haven't, they really regret it. Things like, for instance, the Baltimore Design Center, which Craig knows about very well. It's great. It's, it, it's full-time, it's all-day, and it includes middle school. So, you've got a long, long path with that.
So, what would be some things you would be looking for in answering a question like that? Outcomes across high schools for students, just if they,
Yeah, that'd be good. If they got any information about further career or life success, that would be good.
We don't have any longitudinal data in Oregon, so that's something we're asking the state to help us with.
So, I'm kind of with Rita. I'm interested in looking at the hybrid model. I don't think I'm, I think the conversation about whether Benson has the elements of a comprehensive school. To me, I think that, in my mind, that's decisions. It's been decided in my mind that they're gonna be a comprehensive high school. But when I saw, and I think the hybrid is, is other, because what, what I see is, and, and maybe, maybe it's a function of the fact that we didn't have a CTE program, but it's like, oh, we're restricting this great thing to just a small group of students. So, if you're one of the lucky ones that Curtis says, you get into Benson, you, you get this deep, great, comprehensive program. And then, you know, all the others, students, you know, I'm just looking at this, and I know, I know it's gonna have something in the column, but like Benson Alliance has nothing in the col- column. And so, I'm thinking, oh, like, wouldn't it be great if you had, yes, this deep experience for some kids, because that's great. But what we need is this other piece that allows other kids to have some of, some of the same, but maybe they don't wanna go deep, or they need something else.
Or have it on their own dedicated campus.
So, I'm interested in looking at that just as a, you know, how could you give more students the opportunity to have some interaction with it?
So, in all of this information we're putting together, I'm assuming you also want sort of the specs for Alliance and all the programs that are connected to it as well? That would be great. And also, just a reiteration of, you know, impacts to schedule. And I, I just wanna say, like, I, Roar, I know you and your team, you did exactly what we asked you to do in terms of producing this work with the constraints that you had every reason to believe, we believed we were operating under. But we, I think, all came in here tonight just saying, we wanna have a very open conversation about what's best for our students, and, and we think we might have to take a step backward to, you know, turn over every stone and have that conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
What a look, eh? I think it would also be very good if you adopted some faculty.
Anything else?
Yeah, so I'd like to see a district-wide have pros and cons. I think maybe the way we get to the quality piece might be is, if we can get the, what are this, what are this KSA skills, knowledge, that kids get out of different programs, comparison to, that, that might be the only way we can get at that. Because we don't have a large,
I just have one thing real quick. So, and like, some of the plans with, you know, we're, as we're trying to increase, like, CT, or with the, the option C, right, is, is the full, like Benson is a full CTE-oriented. Is there, like, plans or like, looking forward ahead to be able to, like, fund those programs year by year going forward? Like, because I know you, you know, we spent a lot of money making that happen. Like, just, I'm saying hypothetically, but, you know, with these huge CT programs that could go in, is there plans for funding? And like, and like, in twenty years, is, are some of them gonna have to not be a part of that school anymore? They're gonna have to go away because we,
Hopefully, by then, we'll have such great business and industry partnerships that they'll, they'll help fund those programs that are creating their workforce.
And that's also why some of those suites are four different sizes, is for that type of flexibility for program change.
Right.
You can build those programs so they're self-sustaining.
So, the, one other question I wanna throw out there is, we have, what, sixteen percent of our high school kids in some kind of alternative program?
Twenty?
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 Yeah. Which is,
Usually twenty.
Wow.
So, we have, we have two courses at play here. One is our, the deterioration of our society, frankly.
Ryan picks that today.
Creating, creating kids with way more challenges. And, you know, the start of a real quality improvement. So, hopefully, kids would be getting a better education and have less need of an alternative program. And who knows if our deterioration has kinda, you know, plateaued out? I don't know, but I, to me, it's been getting steadily worse for a couple of days. What's our projected need? And is there any way to project any kind of need for alternative slots going forward?
So, it depends on how you look at the whole model, right? I think there's a lot we can do. We, in other conversations, talk about the lack of systemic work that we've done. It wasn't the vision before.
Yep.
It's more the vision now. So, there's a lot of efficiencies, improvements, and quality that you can look forward to when you start to bring everybody together collaboratively to look at that. We, we think there's a lot we can do as we work with high schools to look at how we better serve. And I just think that there's so much work to do in every aspect, even when we talk about buildings and facilities, and where the kids are gonna go, and what programs we're talking about. Because we haven't even had the little language conversation either. And you think about, there's another whole set of programs that were placed in places. The more intentional we get with every step, so this, bringing you back more information, is gonna require us to widen the circle of the conversation with our other high schools, our other principals, thinking about how that works. That's when we start to come together as a system and work collaboratively. And it is in the work that we figure those things out. So, I am an eternal optimist. I believe we will make it better and better for our kids, and that we will get better at serving what their needs are. And we all know now, it's not an option to ignore social, emotional needs and development. As a preschool, starting as a pre-K teacher, I'm just gonna tell you, we knew when they let go of it, it was gonna need to come back. And it needs to come back young, so that we're not dealing with it by the time we get to high school. In the meantime, we'll do what we need to do, however that's shifting, whether it's in a regular class, high school, or a whole array of opportunities for kids.
So, the ramifications of this, though, is if we cut our off-site alternative down to ten percent instead of whatever it is now, then that's a bunch more kids in our comprehensive buildings that we need to plan for.
And that's maybe ten percent of kids.
And more space at Benson then.
We should have done a better job of offering supports and interventions.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And really meet the subset of kids who really do need a distinct set.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and if our intention is to supply that and, and really make the changes we need to do that, then we take these projections and add ten percent.
Correct.
Yep.
Who are twenty percent probably for some schools, and zero for other schools are,
For what?
And that, that impacts how we plan on the facilities.
I'd rather look at what happens from middle school all the way through that transition through high school and say, how do we better connect with kids and keep them connected?
Start with pre-K, but.
And well, you kinda have to start both then.
We can agree with that or whatever.
Okay.
Can I say one soapbox thing based on what Sudan was saying? You know, the other thing there is our really low secret, which is the huge numbers of sped students that we're sending to alternative settings without the commensurate resources, because we're not doing a great job of serving them in our comprehensive high school. That makes sense, and some of our CDOs have, almost have their kids.
Okay, I have six distinct questions to ask. We'll do our best to compile the responses to. So, next week, go ahead. The only thing that differs is the level of quality that's, Yes, no, three, blue.
Okay.
Just to make sure, are we trying to have the option where you have actually two, one big Benson and then a second set? Something that you're gonna take forward?
I think for D, I'm an A, B, and C.
Okay. But the multiple pathways could potentially be a separate building?
I'm hearing that's not out of the realm of possibility. I heard us have a more student-centered conversation today. And for a topic facility, what would it take to serve each of these group of students?
Student needs are driving the conversation.
It's refreshing.
I mean, I reckon more time could be spent in Benson right now to get that suit voiced and see what's going on. So, I'm interested in spending a lot, maybe visiting, spending a lot of time, if, if it's feasible, to get the information we can get.
Okay, so, you got what you need?
Frankers? Not yet, public comment.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna adjourn early.
Public comment?
Oh, let's start the next one. Do we have public comment? Sorry, do we have public comment?
Oh.
Okay, go ahead.
I see you're going down that path. My attitude about the old stuff was no good, and the new stuff was great. I heard, you know, it's a function of the market.
PISA program is going to be actually dissolved this year. And we're, it's gonna be relocated to four high schools. It won't play in,
Okay, we're adjourned.